Well, good morning, everybody. It's 10 o'clock. I'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. And first thing on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming. Go ahead and move forward and go to the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Approval of amendments.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
I'll make that motion to approve the claims for payment.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we've got Jody.
Yes, hi.
Jody Step here.
I'm Jody Step. I am a New York Domestic Violence Advocate for Crisis Intervention Service. I wanted to give you guys my card. You can kind of pass those down, just so you guys have them. And then, we are having an open house in April. Just so people in the community can come see our organization, meet the advocates, kind of just get a feel for what we do and who we are and that kind of a thing. So, my main thing was inviting you guys to come to that if you're available. And then, this is my supervisor, Mary. She's going to have a little bit more information for you.
My name's Mary Byer-Helm-Huley. I'm the Domestic Abuse Program Supervisor. And I know there's been a little confusion in both Harden and Grundy County with the transition from Seeds of Hope to us. I do want to assure you that we are still doing outreach work throughout both of the counties. We have two domestic violence advocates and one sexual assault advocate covering those counties. We also still have the Transitional Housing Program. So, business as usual, pretty much. I know, I think there may have been some confusion with the woman that visited from D-SOC, who runs a shelter in Fort Dodge. It is true that in our now 20-county region, we just have the one shelter in Fort Dodge. What we were finding is that women who were escaping domestic violence situations didn't necessarily want to be in shelter. And if anything, it was just a band-aid on the problem. So, we're looking at more long-term solutions. More help with housing. We do have housing assistance available now. We'll always have to do some emergency sheltering. So, we're using hotels. And we have hotels in every county. We will still use the Fort Dodge Shelter and the Waverly Shelter since it's much closer. But we want to assure you that we are alive and well and doing the same work that Seeds of Hope had been doing. So, not to worry. Do you have any questions?
What are the dates on those again?
It's going to be April 4th. And the Eldora one is in the morning.
Where at in Eldora?
At our office, just in the county office building, down the basement.
I only ask so people can hear it.
Oh, yes, in the basement of the county office building.
So, the structure is, you're breaking it down into two counties, but it's into a larger region? And the larger region would be, how many counties?
Twenty altogether. Crisis Intervention Service covers 15 of those counties.
Okay.
And then, Access out of Ames covers the other five.
And our region goes north, doesn't it?
Correct.
From here, yes.
Correct. So, pretty much all of North Central Illinois. Which is a huge area to cover. The way we've got it split up, we do now have domestic violence and sexual assault advocates for each county. Whereas before, it was more like there was a central office and then we were kind of going out as needed. At this time, we do have a presence in every county, which is better.
Alright, thanks.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, I'm going to leave pamphlets with you two.
They may already leave.
Just make sure you've got our numbers for us.
Well, thank you.
Thanks ladies.
Well, next, we can go to number seven, which is Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Teamsters, 238.
I'll make a motion to approve Collective Bargaining Agreement with Teamsters, number 238.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Teamsters 238 is our union of the Sheriff's Office. And I think we've made quite a few moves in here. And I think they're all very positive for the county and for the employees as well.
Yeah, I think, I'd like to thank the deputies for coming to the table and working with us. I think we made some changes that are for the betterment of Harden County. As supervisors, we're kind of the in-between. We see what they do on a day-to-day basis. And we want to reward them for their job, for what they do, because they do a really good job. And then, we have the people of Harden County, you know, on the other side of what should they be compensated for that. So, it makes our job very interesting when we sit down at the bargaining table because we're, we see both sides of it. And I think the insurance part of this, I think that's been one of the things that people of Harden County have wanted for, is maybe a little bit more ownership of the health benefits that we have. And I understand that. And I think we've really started down that road here with getting that to a percentage. And that's what we've done here, is we've based their premium on a percentage of their insurance. Plus, gave them some nice options if they want to move up to the other. We offered two plans. They can have a percentage of the bottom one, and then they'll pay the difference to go to the top one. And so, I guess I would assure the people of Harden County that this is a step in the right direction. We've got more ownership to our employees. And going hand-in-hand, Ron's been on the Health Committee, and we're trying to get our employees to be more healthy, because that also translates to lower premium costs for the county. So, I really believe this is something that, and working with our negotiator, really hasn't been done too much in Iowa. So, we're kind of on the leading edge of this. And I would like to thank, again, the Union for recognizing that this is the direction that's probably going to come from most of the state as we move forward. And being on the front side of that. So, I know that's long, but it, again, I really like to thank them. And I thought we did a really good job for both sides.
Any more discussion?
Good.
No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Number eight is the Auditor's Monthly Report.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Number nine, Recorder's Monthly Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the Recorder's Monthly Report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Central Iowa Community Services Mental Health Disability Services Policies and Procedures. Lynn.
Yeah, I did a little summary here of just the changes, because I think you guys all received that emailed. And I think Nancy had copies to the board of our plan. But, as you know, with our new region, the state law requires that our new plans be effective July 1st. And we have to have those to the state by April 1st. So, there's been a subgroup in our region that's been working on this. And there's actually three parts of what they call the County Plan. So, the first thing is the Procedures Manual, which you have, and that's what needs to be approved. There's also an Annual Service and Budget Plan, which is basically just each year compiling the budgets, putting them in a document. And then, we have to also list in there, like, who our providers are going to be and things like that. And then, the last part is at the end of the year, we have to do an annual report saying this is what we actually, you know, these are the providers that actually provided services. This is what we actually spent versus what we budgeted. So, the process is, the committee worked on it. We took it to the Governing Board, which Ron is a member of that Governing Board. They did review that and gave it an initial approval. But by our 2080 and our bylaws, we have to take it back to each county for approval also. So, once each county's approved it, it goes back to the Governing Board for final approval. And then, we have to have it to the state by April 1st. We did also, Ron and I met with our Advisory Board about a week ago, and they reviewed it also. And they didn't recommend any changes to it. So, they approved it basically as it was presented. Just a few things to highlight that are different, because we've always had a county management plan. Now, it's a regional plan. So, it's really kind of the same, you know, almost the same template even that we're using as what we used for a county plan, but now it's regional. But some of the main differences are, of course, the organizational structure, you know, now we're a region. So, we have to define how we're going to do the administrative part of it. So, in there, we have our, you know, we have a CEO named, but actually, we're operating as, there's an administrative team. And then, we have the Governing Board, which basically sets all policy and proves everything. We had a strategic planning with Jeff Schott out of University of Iowa and kind of defined what would be regional functions versus remain local. So, some of the things that, you know, regional things will be contracting. So, all of our contracts, well, we won't have county contracts anymore. It'll be a contract with the region. And I'm chairing that part of it. So, like, right now, I'm, we're in the process of getting all those contracts out to providers. And we'll be negotiating those contracts for next year. So, they won't really come back to you guys like we have in a contract with Elsworth Hospital and Access and stuff like that. But they'll be approved by the region rather than by the county. You know, other things like HIPAA, our policies will all be regional. But we did, there are some things that will remain local, at least for now. So, like intake, so actually, if somebody needs to apply for service, so that they can come to our local office and do that, or work with us locally, even over the phone, or with a local person who might, who knows them and knows their situation. Service of coordination will still be local. Employees are still employees of the county. Another thing that's changed is our eligibility. We still, the state law requires that you can't deny or charge a copay to anybody under 150% of poverty. Some counties in our region had, like for our outpatient services, we had a sliding fee that went up to 250%. So, if they were between 150 and 250, it was a progressive percentage they paid. So, if you were like, you know, 200%, I don't remember the exact number, but you might have paid, you know, 50 or 60% copay on whatever your liable charge was. Some counties wanted to go up to 300 or 350%. Some wanted to keep it lower. The amount that we were negotiating was the 250% of poverty. And that will now apply to all services. So, no matter what the service is, between 150% and 250%, there will be a copayment. And that's in Attachment D of the plan, if you want to look at that. And then, eligibility groups. The law says you have to cover mental illness and intellectual disabilities. But it also says that if any county in the region has served other groups, that we will continue to serve them. So, we've served people with developmental disabilities. Most of the other counties have also. We don't have very many, a handful of people. But we will be able to continue to serve those people. And then, also children. I think there were one or two counties in our region that did serve some children. And with the new, with Medicaid laws, there's really no kid that shouldn't have Medicaid now. I mean, between Hawkeye and all the new programs that have come out. So, really, all it would probably be, would be like, you know, we have a few kids that get committed through the courts. And so, there might be attorney bills, or sheriff transports to take them to the hospital, things like that. I can't think of really any other children's expenses that we would have. And then, a standardized assessment, the law also requires that, and this is actually supposed to have already been in effect, but the state kind of was late in getting it done. So, they've got an RFP out right now to hire whoever they're going to have do these assessments. But, so, every client will need to have this assessment done. And it's a formalized thing. It's a national assessment that's done in other states. And then, I think eventually, the plan is that how you score on that assessment is maybe how much you're eligible for as far as services, in either dollars or level of service. So, do you need 24-hour care? Or do you just need somebody to help you a few hours a week, that type of thing? So, that's kind of what that assessment will be used for. Then, core services. The law requires that there are certain core services that have to be covered. So, we've included those, but some of the areas that we identified for our region that we need to, you know, not saying we don't have them at all, but we need to beef up, would be like crisis evaluation. And that would include like trying to come up with a 24-hour crisis response, or a place where people can go for, to be stabilized, rather than go to the hospital if they need that for a short time. Family support. You know, we have a very active NAMI group in the county that advocates for people with mental illness. But this is a more, we'll probably eventually, the region will probably have to have some kind of staff that actually coordinates us a family support program, and that is a requirement of the law. Supported employment and job development. We do have, we've had supported employment in our plan before, but we've not had an agency doing support employment in Harden County for at least two or three years, because the last one was, well, Goodwill had a grant. And then, when that grant ran out, they just pulled out. Because in the smaller rural counties, there aren't the numbers of people to support them coming here to provide services. So, we're hoping as a region, in fact, we did an RFP to try to get providers to come into the region. And we had, for Harden County, the only one that responded was Goodwill. So, we'll be looking at those RFPs, and the board will be looking at those to see if we're going to contract with them.
When do the core services have to be provided? Is there a deadline?
Well, the plans take effect July 1st, so everything, so like I say, some of these things, we, like we do, you know, we do some of the crisis part, because we do emergency response. We have a number that people can call in crisis through our mental health center, things like that. But we need to expand that more and have a better crisis services. Peer support services, that's another core service. And that's basically using people that are consumers of service, but they then are basically hired to support other people. So, like we have our clubhouse in Iowa Falls. So, we could, and they have special training. So, we could have a person who goes through the special training, who's maybe even a member up there, but who is stable. And then, they can be a support to others that are less stable, either by phone or in person. They can, and you know, they work so many hours. And so, I could see that working out well with what we do up there now. Respite, we have respite services available now, but it's more, and respite is basically giving a caretaker a break. So, if you have a, somebody that's really hard to deal with, or that needs 24-hour care, you know, it could be a parent, or it could be a family member, it could be a friend, whoever's kind of the caretaker, that person, if they need a break, that's what it's for. So, like, we have a lot of kids that get services, who maybe they need a weekend, a month, where the parents don't have to be, you know, with them 24/7. So, then, that lets them go to either a respite home, or you can have a respite where the person comes into your home and does that. But that's always very structured and very like planned, like, okay, two weeks from now, they'll go there for the weekend. But what we're thinking we need more of is like respite for like crisis situations, or, you know, I just can't handle this situation now. I need a place where this person can go overnight, or whatever. So, we'll probably be looking at trying to develop more of that. And then, the last area, which isn't really a core service, but we have, every county deals with high-need services. So, we right now have at least one person who has kind of burned his bridges at every provider, and we just literally can't get anybody that will take him as a client. And so, you know, we need to develop something on either our own or a provider that will take those people that are really difficult to handle. So, those would be the main changes from what we have now as a county plan. As I said, the annual plan is just a compilation of our budgets. They took our budgets for this next year, put them together. And this isn't even finalized yet, but you guys don't have to approve this part of it. This is just more of a formal, you know, a document that we have to turn in. But the policies and procedures, the board does need to approve. So, I guess I would ask that you approve that, so that we can take it back to the Governing Board for final approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Management Plan Policies and Procedures.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving to number 11, the amended agreement for detox services, community and family resources.
Community and family resources in Webster City, and we've used them a lot over the years for detox. And that would be for somebody who, you know, a lot of our people who get committed go in, a lot of times go in there both to commit for mental health and substance abuse. Because a lot of times, you can't figure out until they're sober what the real problem is, is if they're mentally ill, or is it that they're, were just maybe drunk or high and made comments that they were going to commit suicide or something. But once they come down off the drugs, they really had no intent to do it. So, this would be just for the people that go in to undergo substance abuse only. And like I said, there's fewer of those now than there used to be. But we still use them quite a bit. And we've had an agreement since, I think, 2002, I believe was the, when I dug out the agreement, that was when I stated. And we have not raised the rate since then. It's like $239 a day. Webster County would be considered the host county. They've been paying 421 for quite some time. So, basically, CFR was saying if we didn't increase the cost, they weren't going to take our clients. We've talked as a region, and even though it's substance abuse, not mental health, we're thinking we're going to have a regional contract with them effective July 1st. But to hold us over between now and July, I would ask that you guys would look at the agreement that, Nancy, do they have that, the one you typed? Okay. And that is a little bit, you know, I changed a few things from what they sent. But I think they'll accept this at least through the rest of this year. And then, we would have a regional contract effective July 1st. They had in the one they sent, basically saying that we would pay for three days, and if we were, if they needed to extend that, they would contact me and we would talk about that. But they had it in there, kind of, if they couldn't get ahold of me, that basically it would just go on. And I took that out, because with cell phones and everything, and, I mean, we've never had a problem getting ahold of each other. So, I think if they really need extra days, they can make that contact, and we can approve that as needed. The other change had to do with, they put in there like, if the detox was for heroin or prescription pain medication, and the average detox is six days, well, again, if they need extra days, they can call. And we can do that on a case-by-case basis, rather than giving them a blanket approval for that. So, I would ask that you approve the agreement as was, as we changed it. Nancy prepared it. And then, if you agree with it, I will get it back to them and explain the changes we made in it. I'm sure they'll accept it.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agreement for T-Doc Services, Community and Family Resources.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Number 12, MICA.
Thanks, Lynn.
Yeah, I didn't mean for this agenda title to be so generic. Specifically, I had talked to Jessica last week, and she said that Brian was in her office, and we were talking about, or you guys were talking about drainage district information on the website and what's available. And that just kind of led to lots of discussions. So, we, I thought, well, I'll just put this up on the agenda and at least start the discussion with you guys. Currently, what is available on our website is just the drainage district layers. And that is on our Beacon site. It's a little hidden. You can actually search by a particular drainage district. And it's a little messy right now, so I was going to do a demo, and I thought, no, I'm actually wanting to change it anyway with Schneider, and they haven't gotten back to me this week before this meeting. But you can search by drainage district and see where the boundaries are. And then, you can also select all the people that live in the drainage district and such. But, and then, it's there because the previous boards wanted access to the information from any computer. But it's, but it's kind of, like I said, it's a little buried. It's not very obvious. There's no drainage tile information on the website. And let me back up for now. Not all the drainage districts are on the Beacon site. Right now, we have what we call a public drainage district. And these are the ones that have been verified, for lack of a word, from the drainage district clerk. So, these are the ones that we feel very confident of where the boundaries are and the information that's out there. The other document we have is this atlas, which you guys have seen. It's by Township. This has pretty much all of the drainage districts in the county, minus five or so. But even the ones that are somewhat of an educated guess, is the terminology that we use, because the information we've had is a little sketchy. And so, it's kind of a best guess boundaries. And there's several of them that are like that. So, this has more drainage districts than what's on the Beacon site. This is not currently on the website, like as a PDF, and it could be. And this is kind of why I'm talking to you, just to kind of know where we wanted to go. I could have just put all this stuff up there, but I wanted to discuss it with you guys first. Anyway, there's no tiles on the Beacon site. There are tile information on this map. And that was, the thought at the time that we put this stuff on the mapping website was that they wanted the landowners to have to call the drainage district clerk for information, and they didn't want individuals fixing their own tiles. And then, turning around and like, you know, saying, telling the county, hey, I fixed this, here's the bill, or whatever. So, they wanted to make sure they were following the codebook. And so, they were being very cautious in what they put out there. And then, to complicate that, and as a side note, that really kind of warrants its own discussion, is that we currently are not really getting any updates on repairs or that are retained by the drainage engineer. They want them, they've talked to them, but we just aren't getting them. The paper maps are just what was in there originally. So, even the tile information isn't really up to date. And as a side note, and this is a discussion I've had with Megan, who has worked with Jane quite a bit on this. Megan would love to see something like what Franklin County does right now. They require updates to be submitted to the drainage clerk with GPS coordinates before the county will pay for the work. So, in order to get paid for the work, they have to basically say where they did the work, and they require GPS coordinates. And then, they do maintain a repair layer, so that we kind of have a record, and then we can update the tile layer on top of that. And it just takes some enforcement, and someone more than just the GIS technician saying, hey, this would be great, or the drainage clerk. So, anyway, basically, what we want to do is talk to you guys about, what kind of information you want to put, or at least to be thinking about it, if we can revisit it. And to let me know, or the drainage clerk, or just us, the people that deal with this, what kind of information you're guys are comfortable having out there.
Well, from now, I'm open for more discussion. We do have drainage meetings, and we can bring that back to the drainage meetings. And we would have the drainage engineer there, too. We can ask a lot of questions. But right now, we're just getting it out in the public, so the public is aware of this. I don't know if you guys have any more.
Well, it started, I was in visiting with Jessica here last week, and visiting about the drainage office. Trying to just make it so people don't have to drive down here for information that is okay for them to have, when we don't give everything out. But maps and things like that, doing it right, when they can just sit home, click on it, and make a map, and walk out to their field and say, okay, this is where it's at, let's not hit it. I think it would be beneficial, because it ties our person up in the office for just printing maps. We're more than glad to do it if they come down. But if we're given an option on the internet that they can click on it and not have to come down and save them that trip, that's kind of how the conversation started going. And you brought up a good point of, we probably need something on rules and regulations, too, on there to let them know that they just can't go out and start digging.
Well, and Lance brought up, we were talking about this before the meeting. I mean, really, there's no drainage presence at all on our website. There's really no information at all about where to start, what to do, what you can and cannot do. And I think that's a whole area that really, I mean, it's such a big topic in this county that I think there has to be a lot of information put up there. Like you say, what you can and cannot do, what are the procedures, what forms you fill out to say something's broken, who do I even talk to? I mean, we've kind of got it in certain places, but it's not easy to find, and it's not obvious. And it's a big enough thing in this county that, just like zoning, it kind of can have its own little category, and its own, like, almost like its own little department. So, I think all that would be great. It just obviously has to come from you guys, because it has to be what you guys are comfortable with putting out there and answering the questions and holding people accountable.
Yeah, I don't think people realize what, how much time we spend on drainage of our county, but how important drainage is to our county. And so, spending time on it is something that we're definitely used to doing. But we just want to make sure it's kind of brought up into the year 2014 and make it available.
So, you know, things to consider is, we can make it a little more obvious to search search drainage districts on the website, on the Beacon site, and that's just if you want to see where's drainage, you know, it's number 64, or whatever. We could put this map document we put out, we could put those PDFs out there, so it's large enough that I probably would almost put it per township, we'd make some kind of map, so people could know what to click on, but it would be just a static PDF, same as looking at this page. Things that also, you know, just information about it, who to contact, forms for repairs, I assume there's a rulebook somewhere, you know, that should probably be.
It's a big book. It's a big book.
Yeah, and managing this information, yeah, it's a big book, how do you, I mean, we've put, in the past, I've put all the Franklin County Code of Ordinances on there, and we basically have a list, and it's like a table of contents, and you click on it, I mean, we broke this mini-page document down into little sections, so we could take what would be a thick book and put it in like chapter by chapter, or whatever, but it has to be something that we know what it is, where to find it, and how to update it, obviously, because there would be changes, and we want it something that's manageable, but I think all that stuff is, things that should be considered, and so whoever you guys need to talk to, and I encourage you, I'm going to continue, because our drainage stuff is already on the Beacon site, I'm going to work with Schneider, who's our company that hosts that site, I want to make, we just kind of put it up there, because, but it's got some extra information on there that's unnecessary, and we want to make it a little cleaner, so someone can more obviously search, so I'm going to work with them and get that done, and then I'd like to show you guys how to do it, and where it is, and that will help you make your decisions on if you want to add to it, or change how we do it. So I'll pursue that, and then get back to you guys on when that's ready for a demo.
That sounds really good, I think that's moving in the right direction.
Yeah, if you're drainage meetings and stuff, if someone could be taking some notes maybe of what you think you'd like to include, that would be really helpful.
From an economic development standpoint, that would be great, if you could have it on the website and more visible, because I'm on there all the time, and we had some drainage issues on a project, and it would have been so handy to be able to go to there and pull up what we needed, so.
And it's just been an area that's been, I'm not saying neglected on the website, but it's just not been something that's been emphasized at all, and there's a lot of information that's just not been put out there.
Well, more than a few times, we've been up, looking at our maps and pointing out the drainage of questions that you've had, and we've found out that our map is not necessarily the updated version, so we do need to get with our engineer and make sure that we have all the additions.
And that was a kind of a side note I had with Megan, because she's the one that does maintain the drainage repair layer for Franklin County, and it works really slick. I mean, she gets documents set on her desk, and she only updates it annually, so she's not even doing it constantly, but then they feel comfortable saying, these are the things that have changed. And right now, we don't have a, my understanding is, and this is not my area, but there's not a lot of, this is what has happened, this is what is done, this has actually been accomplished, now we move on, I mean, there's just not a lot of tracking of that. It's kind of, we've had that problem with other side things, kind of like, you know, putting in address signs, you know, we request this of information, but we don't always know when it gets done. If it got done, which we assume it does, but when, you know, does it take a long time or a short amount of time, and so there's been some frustration, I think. It's hard to have worked so hard on information that's really, can be really time-consuming, and then not feel like we're not updating it adequately, because, you know.
So much easier to update on the computer than it is in a manual book, and having to keep printing new books every time, it's impossible.
Not been horrible, but, you know, we've got the mechanisms in place to keep it updated, so we really don't want to run into the point where 15, 20 years from now, we feel like we have to start over from scratch, because we don't know where we're at with the status of this information, that would be really not, not good. So that was really what this discussion was about, to kind of start getting them all rolling on, get your brains wheeling on what you guys want to do with it.
Thank you.
Thanks, MICA.
Any more questions? Well, let's move on to Pine Lake Country Club liquor license board member change. And Kelly sent us an email explaining this. I believe it's just the contact persons change, is that right?
That's what, how I took it on it.
There was a new board member.
New board member.
Make sure that liquor license is approved.
We got you covered on this one.
We have exemptions down here, Darrell.
Well, I'll take a motion on this, if anybody'd like to.
Go ahead and make that motion to accept the liquor license for Pine Lake Country Club.
And I'll second.
It's been moved to second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ineligibility homestead, and military credits to be disallowed for 2014 payable 15 and 16.
They're all disallowed right there, yeah?
Yeah, they're, yep, I believe so.
Make a motion to go ahead and approve for the, it needs to be disallowed, we have two sheets in front of us, so I'll just make the motion as printed on the two sheets that we have in front of us.
Disallowed for 2014.
Yeah.
And payable 15, 16, and I second.
It's been moved to second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permit, Secondary Roads Department.
No utility permits.
Anything on secondary roads?
Gladly, Lance, pull them.
They're firming up again.
Trying them out.
Yeah. Moving from that, we can go to, we have an approval agreement with Calhoun and Burns and Associates for preliminary design services for replacement of bridge number 8340, south of Steamboat Rock, with payment coming out of Farm and Market Fund.
Right, if you could table that, they haven't got it to me yet, they were going to. But that'll be for the preliminary design services of, it's right south of Steamboat on S-56, that little bridge in there.
It's right before Tower Rock Turn, is that right?
Yeah.
Right as you come out of Steamboat to the south.
The new Ruby Park, or the land donated to conservation.
Just to the east.
So.
Yep.
But I haven't received that in the mail from them yet, but it's on its way, so.
Do I have a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table the agreement with Calhoun, Burns on the replacement bridge just south of Steamboat Rock.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, it's tabled. Any other business? Hearing none, I can ask for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for adjournment.